Good morning. Greetings in Jesus' name. I count it a joy and a privilege to be here, meeting with you servants of the Lord. Thank you for making the time. I know you are very busy people. But thank you for making the time for this meeting today. And I've been blessed by the testimony that our brothers just shared. I'm going to share with you more as a journey that we have walked, that has brought us through a lot of things that God just opened our eyes to see that we did not even know about. And then I hope that as our hearts meet, that we can come to a place where we see which way the Lord is pointing. Amen. I want to start by reading a scripture in the book of Joel. My wife and I have been on this mission, on the journey for three weeks, so we look forward to going back home tonight. Joel, chapter 3, verse 9 up to verse 10. I may not go into deep explanation, but I just want to keep this scripture at the back of our minds. And I hope that it will continue speaking to us long after today. Joel, chapter 3, verse 9 up to verse 14, it says, "Proclaim these among the nations; prepare for war. Rouse the warriors; let all the fighting men draw near and attack. Beat your ploughshares into swords, and your pruning hooks into spears. Let the weakling say, 'I am strong.' Come quickly, all you nations from every side, and assemble there. Bring down your warriors, O Lord; let the nations be roused. Let them advance into the valley of Jehoshaphat, for there I will sit to judge all the nations on every side. Swing the sycamore, for the harvest is ripe. Come, trample the grapes, for the winepress is full and the vats overflow. So great is their wickedness! Multitudes and multitudes in the valley of decision, for the day of the Lord is near, in the valley of decision." Let's pray. Loving Father, even as we are gathered here as your servants, we return all the glory and honor to you. Thank you, Father, for counting us worthy to be co-workers with you and for entrusting us with the lives of your people to lead them your way. Father, even this morning, we pray, let your Holy Spirit minister to us. Father, we desire to follow you in every detail. So we pray, give us understanding, give us revelation and wisdom, and give us the grace to go forth and bear fruits, and may our fruits abide. Lord, we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen. Just give you a little bit of background about myself. As you've heard, she and I are married. She and I have got two children between us. My first marriage, my wife went to be with the Lord. We had four children together. And we also adopted three other children, giving us a total of nine children, which makes a little church at home. So we have no problem worshiping the Lord together. I lead a ministry called World Trumpet Mission that has been in existence since 1988. And I had a supernatural visitation from the Lord, which completely changed my understanding of ministry. I can't go into it now, but if you go on the net, on YouTube, you can find where I shared in Kansas City in detail about the visitation of the Lord and the message he gave concerning the day of his return and the readiness or lack of readiness of the church, the need to call people back to him in repentance and return to the basics. We are based in Kampala, the capital city of Uganda, where we started about 20 years ago, 15 years ago, we started the Africa Prayer Mountain for all nations. It's a prayer mountain we started as a token of thanks to God. Because when Uganda was going through its darkest hour, when Uganda was declared an Islamic state, churches were banned. It was illegal to be found in a church building on any other day except Sunday. And Sunday, it was only Catholic Church, Anglican Church, and Orthodox Church allowed. All the other churches were banned. Prayer in homes was illegal. Many pastors were arrested for holding prayer meetings in homes. Prayer shifted away from church and from home and went into the jungles. And because the government at that time, Idi Amin, was determined to turn Uganda into an Islamic state, it was doubtful whether Christianity would survive. And many pastors who were in prison had lost hope. They knew they were going to die. They began to ask God, get other people to pray for us, because we do not even have the faith to pray anymore. And that, making a prayer like that may sound so simple, but later on, when change came, we began to see people coming to Uganda from America, from Europe, from different parts of Africa. And also, when I started traveling later in ministry, I met so many people. I met people from Japan, people from Korea, people from South Africa, people from so many different countries who confessed that God spoke to them supernaturally to pray for Uganda. One woman from Japan was walking up in the middle of the night, and the Lord told her, pray for my beloved Uganda. And she didn't even know Uganda was a country. She thought Uganda was a woman who was being tormented. So she prayed for about two months for this woman, until a friend of hers told her, no, Uganda is a country. But she continued praying. I was in South Africa, in Cape Town, and a family came to me, husband, wife, and their daughter, who was 17 years. And they said, since she was four years, she would never allow us to go to bed without praying for Uganda. She said, the Lord spoke to her to stand as an intercessor to pray for Uganda. So we realized we survived the onslaught of darkness because of the prayers of people from other countries. And at one time, we were just asking God, we want to thank you for loving us so much. Thank you for raising up others to uphold us in our weakest moment. And we thought we should rent a football stadium and hold a whole day of Thanksgiving. But as we prayed about it, I felt in my spirit that would come and go, and we would forget all about it. So I asked God, what is a better way to say thank you? And the Lord gave me a word. He said, freely you are given, freely give back. And I thought, okay, what is it? What is he saying? And what my understanding was, we received prayers from other nations freely. We are supposed to give back prayers for other nations. So I shared with my team, and we decided to buy a place that we could dedicate for prayer. We wanted to buy a house and dedicate it as a house of prayer for all nations. But we felt a house would very easily be mistaken to belong to one church or one ministry, and therefore people would treat it like that. We wanted something that everybody could belong to, could own, could come to without feeling compromised, and could go and come when they wanted. That's when the idea of a prayer mountain came to us. And so we believed God. It took us three years of just believing in faith until provision began to come in. And we purchased this land. And today, the prayer mountain is going on. There's prayer day and night, nonstop. Since 1999, December, we have never had a night or a day without prayer going 24/7. And as prayer for the nations, I want to say, even as we are gathered here, there are people right now praying for Singapore. They may never have come to Singapore before, but they are praying for God's purposes to come to pass in the nations of the world. Praise the Lord. As a nation, we've gone through a lot. And as an individual, I've been privileged to be part of God's move in my country, not by choice, but by default. I was only nine years old when Idi Amin came to power. And I have been a witness of the things, the darkest moments, the terror, the fear that came upon the land. I've also been part of the prayer as a child, growing up in my early teenage. The travail, the intercession, that desperate travailing prayer, where people are no longer asking for anything of God, they were just saying, we just want you to come. We don't want to ask to tell you what to do. We don't want to ask you this or that. We want you to come as our shepherd. And when change came, we did not understand the spiritual reality behind the whole saga. So there was relaxation, there was Thanksgiving. We rejoiced, and we stopped praying. Because our understanding was, God has answered us. We have thanked him. Let us now move on. Churches were restored, freedom of worship was restored. But it didn't take long. It took only two years, and then we were back into chaos. We had an election that went wrong, and the next thing was fighting. Rebel groups rose up, and the nation was plunged back into a very dark season, even darker than the one of Idi Amin. Because the nation was at war, the government could not support the army, and yet it had to stand because of the army. So what the government did was to give the soldiers freedom to find a way of paying themselves. And it was terror. I know of the army barracks, the buses would come out in the night and ferry soldiers to the villages and the suburbs where people live from around 10:00 PM to around 4:00 AM. And all they would be doing was break people's houses, loot, steal, kill, and maim. And that was our normal life. It was normal to be put at gunpoint anytime, day or night. It was normal to find dead bodies by the streets. It was normal to wake up in the middle of the night and hear gunshots, you hear people screaming, you hear people wailing, and in the morning, you go out and ask where, where was it? And they tell you, that home there, someone was killed. That home there, someone was shot. And we tried our best to survive under such conditions until they started killing pastors and churchmen for preaching against the injustice. Long story short, the prayer movement started again. And this is, I was a bit older now, I was in my teenage. And that's one of the most amazing things I can talk about, God's working in a nation. Because prayer was going on in churches. This was not in the jungles like in Idi Amin's time. It was mainly in churches. Women would come and pray during the day, men would come and pray during the night. And the presence of God would manifest to the physical eye. Sometimes it would come like a mist or a cloud that just comes in the church, and you just don't see even the upper parts of the people were standing up because the cloud is just hovering over them. The presence of God would be felt like a liquid, liquid presence. As you enter the church, you feel you're breaking into something real. Miracles, signs, and wonders happened, but they were not the focus. When people would say, oh, God has done this, and a lame person has been healed, and they are walking now. And people would just say, if God has done that, God is going to heal our nation. God is going to heal. So they continued. Pastors were arrested, soldiers would come and take them away. And as soon as they are gone, someone else would stand up and say, let's continue praying. Many soldiers came to the Lord as a result of seeing this power of God manifesting. And soon, change came. And when change came, again, we fell back into the same slumber. We rejoiced, we thanked God, and we relaxed. And without the pressure and the crisis, soon prayer began to go down. About four, five years later, we were experiencing another crisis. This time, we did not even know how to pray about it, because it was not someone we can point to, like Idi Amin. This was HIV and AIDS. And Uganda was declared the nation worst affected by AIDS worldwide. We had the highest prevalence levels in the whole world. And the World Health Organization was predicting that within 10 years or 12 years, Uganda was going to be a failed state. Thirty percent of our population was likely to have died of AIDS. Another 30% would have contracted HIV and would be sick. And the remainder would not sustain the economy. It would collapse. And we were invited by a government minister from the office of the president in charge of security. And he said to us, I'm here to say to you, medical world has got no solution. Government has got no solution. International community has got no solution. Only God can help us in this. Will you mobilize the nation to pray? And that day, we were at loss. As much as it feels good for government to turn to church, it was not fun for such a challenge to be thrown at us. But on that day, late in the evening, as most people had even left, we received a prophetic word from God that completely changed our understanding. And God drew our attention away from the crisis. He says, until now, you have not learned your lessons. You pray only because of a crisis has come. And when the crisis goes, you stop praying. Says, today, you've got to change. Pray because of my purposes. If you pray because of crisis, crisis will go and others will come. And you'll always be reactionary. You will never set the pace. You'll only be reacting to what the enemy is doing. But if you pray for my purposes in your nation, then I will fight your battles for you. I will see you through all the challenges that come your way as a nation. That was the first time that we had ever even heard God speak about his purposes for the nations. We had never understood anything like that. That started us on a journey to start asking, what are your purposes for a nation? If it's a nation like Israel, or Egypt, or Assyria in the Bible, that's understandable. But Uganda is not mentioned in the Bible. How are we going to discover your purposes for Uganda? But the Lord went on to teach us that he has got purposes and destiny for every nation on earth. And that these purposes have got to come to pass before the day of the Lord comes. And he was opening our eyes that the Great Commission is a mission to nations. Go ye into all the world and make disciples of every nation. A disciple is not just a follower. If you remember in Luke, chapter 14, if you remember in Luke, chapter 14, Jesus was talking about disciples. And he said to the followers, people were following him, said, if a person does not give up or love me more than his mother, his father, his name, his property, his sister, he's not worthy to be my disciple. They were followers, but he disqualified them from being disciples. And in John, chapter 8, he was talking to the Jews who had believed on him. They were believers. And he said to them, continue ye in the word. You will know the truth, and the truth will set you free. And then you will show yourselves to be my disciples indeed. So they were believers, but not disciples yet. And God was showing us that every nation is supposed to be discipled. And he says in John, chapter 15, if you abide in me and my words abide in you, you will ask whatever you desire, and it shall be given to you. This is pleasing to my Father, who wants you to bear much fruit, showing yourselves to be my disciples. So every nation is supposed to be discipled, brought to the place where it will bear fruit for the kingdom of God. It will serve the kingdom of God, the purpose of the kingdom of God. And the last day that is proclaimed in the book of Revelations, chapter 11, verse 15, it says, "And all the kingdoms of this world shall become the kingdom of our God." So God began to open our understanding that we needed to stop, take our eyes off building, of dealing with just crises because they affect us. And we need even to take our eyes off just building our ministries, just building our ministries, and lift our eyes to see him building his kingdom in the nations. And he was calling us to join him as he brings the body of Christ together to lay possession of the nation and bring the nation into his calling. And the Lord was showing us that every single nation on earth has got a calling in God, that Israel is the firstborn among the nations, and it has a calling. God raised Israel up for a purpose, to be a blessing to the nations. But then the Lord was showing us that Israel is just the firstborn. All the other nations are supposed to follow in line and become a blessing to the nations. And so he began to speak to us about his calling on Uganda. And even the sufferings that we had gone through as a nation, even the trials and the pain, he said, everything comes in line with the calling of the nation. So if a nation will not respond to God, there are circumstances that will be allowed to come to the nation, and they will always come in line with the calling of the nation. In our case, the Lord spoke to us about, he said, I've called you to be a midwife nation. Midwife meaning, you are a nation of travail. You are a nation that helps, that will send men and women out of your nation to other nations of the world to be a midwife. A midwife does not own the baby. A midwife comes alongside the mother and helps the mother to come into travail and give birth. And after the baby is born, the mother takes the baby and rejoices with the baby. And the Lord was saying, I'm going to use you as midwives in the nations. I will send you to the nations to come alongside my people and to help bring them into the spirit of travail and give birth to my purposes in those nations. Then those nations would rise up into my calling and would be a blessing among the nations. And he said, excuse me, if we obey, he will anoint us. He will give us his Holy Spirit, and he will anoint us for the work. If we do not, he will allow more circumstances that will cause travailing to come upon the land. And he says, what we have experienced in the past with Idi Amin, with the civil war, with AIDS, is just an indication that he will do whatever it takes to bring us to the place where he wants us to rise up to. So the sooner we respond, the better. I want to read to you a scripture that the Lord gave us at that time. It is in the book of Proverbs, chapter 1. Proverbs, chapter 1, and verse 20 says, "Out in the open, wisdom calls aloud. She raises her voice in the public square. On top of the wall, she cries out. At the city gates, she makes her speech. How long will you, who are simple, love your simple ways? How long will you mockers delight in mockery, and fools hate knowledge? Repent at my rebuke, then I will pour out my thoughts to you, and I will make known to you my teachings. But since you refuse to listen when I call, and no one pays attention when I stretch out my hand, since you disregard my advice and you do not accept my rebuke, in turn, I will laugh when your disaster strikes you, and I'll mock you when calamity overtakes you. When calamity overtakes you like a storm, and when disaster sweeps over you like a whirlwind, when distress and trouble overwhelm you, then they will call to me, but I will not answer. And they will look for me, but they will not find me, since they hated knowledge and did not choose to fear the Lord. Since they would not, they would not accept my advice and spend my rebuke, they will eat the fruit of their ways and be filled with the fruit of their schemes. For the waywardness of the simple will kill them, and the complacency of fools will destroy them. But whoever listens to me will live in safety and be at ease without fear of harm." And what the Lord was saying to us was, he said, for several years, I have been sending prophetic words to you. I have raised up prophets and people to come to speak to you from the nations, and I've raised up men and women from within your country to speak to you that rise up to the calling of the Lord. And up to now, it has not happened. And says, I want you to know the timing is coming, but the nation is not ready. And if the timing comes upon you and you are not ready, it will only bring judgment to the land. It will take you into another cycle of travail and pain, which will not be broken until it has run its full course. So choose now to turn to me, or else this is what will come to you, and this generation will not see the move of the Holy Spirit. Now, this woke us up. And we began to seek God and say, God, how do we pray? And it's a long story. But it's out of that that God began to show us how he equipped Abraham to possess the land of Canaan. It was not by fighting. It was not by manipulation. It was by the strategy of prayer altars. And God gave Abraham, he moved into the land of Canaan and raised up altars. Every time he moved and settled somewhere, he would establish a prayer altar. And when he had separated with the Lord, God himself came to him and said, arise and walk through the length and the breadth of the land, for I have given you the land. And when he would move, the next stop, he raised altars. And what the Lord was teaching us, that the altar is a place of meeting and communion between the physical world and the spiritual world. The altar of prayer opens up the spiritual realm, and God comes down. Actually, throughout the Bible, everywhere, whether it is in Genesis with Noah or with David, the priests, and everywhere, everywhere in the Bible, they talk about raising an altar, the next thing they say, and the Lord came down. And God was showing us that if we raise altars all over the country, then his presence would come down. And that means opening up the heavens, breaking the power of the principalities, powers and rulers of the darkness that are covering the land, and opening up the heavens, which would cause his kingdom to come and be manifest in the land, and his will to be seen in the land. So we started seeking the Lord. At first, we thought, oh, we can hold prayers. And the Lord said to us, I want, he gave us the scripture in Isaiah 62, which says, "I have set watchmen on your walls of Jerusalem, who will not keep quiet day and night, and they will not give themselves any rest. You who call upon the name of the Lord, give him no rest until he establishes Jerusalem as a praise in the earth." And he said, I want unceasing prayer. We did not know how to do unceasing prayer. At first, we thought, let us do chains of prayer, so that one group goes in for two hours or three hours, comes out, another group goes in. And the Lord said, that is very good. Keep it up, but I want more. I want every one of you to pray without ceasing. Now, we sat down in a council as leaders and said, how do we do that? And someone said, I have read about that. In one book, it says, if you pray in tongues without ceasing for two days, it will catch on, and you'll find yourself praying without ceasing all the time. So we determined we are going to pray in tongues without ceasing. But I want to say, it didn't work. I remember myself, I was trying to pray without ceasing all the time. And then I realized, either I forget and get involved in something, or I'm so much deep in prayer, I'm good for nothing. At one time, I was washing plates after dinner, and after about 40 minutes, I realized I had only washed one plate. Because my thoughts were not with me, I was deep engaging with God and I was just massaging the plate. So it didn't work. So it didn't work. And then one day, I remember I was at home. I came back very tired and I was in the bedroom and my wife and someone else were in the living room. And she came running and said, "Come, come, come." I said, "What?" He said, "Come, come and see." And there was, they had received a videotape from a, a very old videotape from one speaker and they had put it in. And this speaker was talking about praying into the presence of God. And we sat down there and even as he spoke, as we watched, you could feel the presence of God come in the room. And he was talking about the breakthrough prayer, how you pray into the presence of God. And suddenly when he finished, we were all silent. And then we turned and looked at each other and said, "We have ever done that." When we were in deep crisis and a deep trial and there was no hope, no help, we would press in into the presence of God, pray with all our hearts. And we knew what he was talking about. The only difference is we never knew how to do it every day. We didn't even know that it was supposed to be done on a daily basis. We didn't even know how to produce it. It was only produced out of a desperate heart pressing into the presence of God through total surrender. Where you say to the Lord, "I have no opinion, no conditions, no demands, I just want you. I just want you." And so we started, that was our beginning, we started to seek the Lord, "Teach us, oh God, teach us, oh God." And gradually we began to experience it on a daily basis, on a daily basis. And he said to us, "If you do that and teach my people to do that, I promise you, my presence will abide with you and you will not change nations by power nor by might, but by my Holy Spirit." That is when we began to see God touch the nation, touch the government, touch issues in the society and begin to bring about change. I could go on and on and on and give a lot of experiences that were completely beyond our power. But we saw God move. We saw God bring healing to the land. We saw God unveiling things in the roots of the nation, things which were more than a hundred and fifty years old and was saying, "These things, things are still affecting you as a nation and they are in the roots of the nation, that's why you have this in government, that's why you have this in the church. But if you bring repentance and bring healing, it will change." And we saw it happening. We saw it happening. We saw relationships with Uganda and other countries which were sour and he spoke into that, we did what he said and these relations were mended before our eyes. On the television, you would sit there and watch as the nations come together and they addressed those very issues. Leaders who are not even believers, they would stand up and address the issues and say, "Today, we put it behind us. We put it behind us, we forgive and we start a new day." And I think, wow, God is able to do this. Now, with time, people began to come to document what God was doing. The Sentinel Group from the US came and spent several weeks in Uganda documenting the transforming, the transformation process. Another group from Switzerland. Then even BBC came, with time even the TBN from the US. And then we had this war, the war in the north of Uganda, which had been going on for seventeen years. Everything had been done to bring it to an end. It was not working. America was, came along and was training our army, arming our army. Germany, Israel, they were all helping. It was not making any difference. And many times we would pray and feel that we've got a breakthrough. Then something would happen and we are back in the same state. And one day we were in a meeting, there are so many testimonies of what God is doing in transforming power, in the church, in the families, in the workplace, businesses. Then there was a pastor from the north of Uganda and he stood up and said, "I don't understand this God. How come you all are praying and are seeing testimonies and breakthroughs and we are praying and seeing nothing? My people are dying every day. My people are displaced. We are no longer living in our homes, we are living in displaced people's camps. Our women have been taken to Sudan, our children have been taken away, abducted. What kind of God is this? Who answers your prayers but cannot answer ours?" And it humbled all of us. No one had an answer. So we went before the Lord and we felt the leading of the Lord to call a national fasting. So we sent out a message across the whole nation. It took us six weeks to get consensus. Eventually, the national fast started. And I will not go into details. You can find this on the internet. It was produced in a video documentary called "The Unconventional War" and the whole story is there. But one thing led to another. God visited some of the generals who were in the battlefield and spoke to them. They needed to humble themselves and pray to win that war. The government, the president was involved. Eventually, intercessors were flown by military helicopters to go to the battlefront, to pray and cleanse the land. Because the Lord showed us that the enemy, the rebels, had made a covenant with the people of the area, including church leaders. That is what made their prayers ineffective. As long as the covenant stood, we could not break that war. And we had to go in, identify where the altars are, the unholy altars, break their power and do what they had done in covenant against God and bring healing and bring cleansing. Brothers and sisters, we did that. It's all documented, caught on video. That was the last time that the rebels ever scored any single victory. From that moment, every ambush they set was destroyed. The rebels, I mean, the commanders were arrested. Sudan, which was supporting them, suddenly stopped supporting them, opened its borders and invited Ugandan army to go after them. And in three years, the war was completely over. Joseph Kony, the rebel, was pushed out of Uganda, out of Sudan, out of Congo and further away into Central African Republic. So then the Lord began to send us to the nations to go with the word of God and call nations to arise in repentance and turn back to him and start pushing for the discipling of their peoples. And we saw good things happening, we saw different degrees of response. But I want to move fast forward now. After about ten years of moving in the nations, everything had become so ordinary, so normal, so, it was more like all rhetoric. And I was disillusioned. I was discouraged. I began to ask the Lord, "Do these principles work? Do they work elsewhere? Can you show me another place besides our nation where you will follow these principles if people honor you?" I said, "Take me to a land where there has not been a move of God, a land where the church is weak and I want to test these principles." And in my thinking, I was thinking about some country in Central Africa, Central America, maybe Suriname or somewhere there. But the Lord spoke to me and said, "Go to Taiwan." And I thought, Taiwan? I went on the net and started researching on Taiwan, it's a Buddhist country. The church is just two percent. And I thought, that's not what I was thinking about. At any way, we're in Jerusalem and Pastor Lily came to me and said, "Will you come to Taiwan?" At first I said, "No." And then I went back to Uganda and the Lord spoke to me and said, "I want you to go to Taiwan." When we went to Taiwan, I went with my wife, it was, I had offered them July. But they said, "Can you come in February? We have a pastors gathering, about two hundred to two hundred and fifty pastors coming for three days retreat and we are still praying about the speaker. So can you come and minister in that?" I said, "Okay, we will come." And we went. We had three days with the pastors and the atmosphere was very good, we felt a connection in the spirit. Then we spoke in Taipei to about a thousand intercessors. Then we went to the south in Kaohsiung, again another big gathering. And they said, "Since you had given us July, can you come back in July?" Because we had felt something in the spirit, I said, "Yes, we will come back." So in July, we went back. Actually, I came under a very strong spiritual attack. I was hospitalized. They had to take me from hospital in a wheelchair to go to preach in the conference. And after preaching, they would take me back to the hospital. We did that in Taipei, we did that in another city called Taizhong and then we went into Kaohsiung. But at the end of the time, my heart was warm. I mean, I felt excited. I felt like we had connected at a level deeper than I had experienced in many other countries. So I asked, "Can I meet with the pastors? I want, just want to open my heart to them." So we met with the pastors in Taipei and I spent about two hours just unfolding before them and said, "These are the principles that the Lord taught us of how to bring a nation into its destiny. And this is the roadmap." I said, "If you will commit and we walk this together, I promise you, you will see a move of God in your nation." And they said, "Okay, give us some time to talk. You can go back to the hotel." We went back to the hotel in the evening, Pastor Lily comes and says, the pastors said, "They can't do it. They are too busy, it's just too heavy and everyone has got their own vision, but God has called them to do, they can't do this." I felt so sad, but I had nothing to do. So we went out to dinner, then she said, "Okay, tomorrow you're leaving to go back to Uganda. Can we have another date when you're coming back?" I said, "Pastor Lily, come back for what?" She said, "No, we want another time, another time like this." I said, "I'm not just interested in speaking in conferences. I want to see God move. I want to see tangible presence of God and I want to see undeniable testimony of God touching a nation. I thought it was going to happen here, but the pastors are not ready and you cannot fight with that." So in the morning, she came, take us to the airport and she said to me, "Pastor John, give me one condition, that if we did it, you'd come back. Just one, what is the one thing you would demand to come back to Taiwan?" And I said to her, "Gather for me thirty pastors who are willing to spend with me five days, day and night. And I want to just pour out my heart to them. If after five days they still cannot do it, we'll let it go." She said, "Thirty pastors, five days, unheard of." She said, "Unheard of." She said, "The pastors here are busy. They are so busy, there's so much." And I said, "That's the only one condition I have." And she said, "Okay, I will try." That was July. And by September, she had no one, no registration. I think in October she had ten people. And she said, "Will you come for ten, fifteen people?" I said, "No. I'll only come if you can get thirty." Then they began registering towards the end of November, I mean, the October. In November she said, "I have fifty." Then by the time we went there in December, we had three hundred pastors. Amen. Glory to God. And they were willing to come and spend with us time from Monday up to Friday. Day and night we're together in a retreat center. Actually, there were more people wanted to come, but the place could not take more than three hundred. We spent, every morning we would come together in meetings, share the word, pray for hours. On the third, on the fourth day, I was still sharing like this and one pastor raised his hand and he said, "Let me get it clear. Are you saying to us that if we follow those principles and we give ourselves to do that, we are going to see God move in this country?" I said, "If we, if we all commit ourselves to follow what we are, the Lord is leading us to, I promise you, it will happen." And he said, "Let me ask you again. Are you saying that if we do all that, we will see God move and you're putting it within a bracket of five years, we will see God move in this country?" And I said, "Yes." And she turned around and he turned around and began to speak in Mandarin. And they were shouting at one another and they were standing up and waving their hands. I didn't know what they were saying. But after about fifteen, twenty minutes, they all turned around and they were saying things I didn't understand. So I said, "Pastor Lily, what are they saying?" They said, "They said they will do it. They will do it." So we rejoiced and we dedicated the last day just to committing ourselves, surrendering ourselves and saying, "God, you know the programs we have, the business schedules, but we are saying, help us." And as I was waiting upon God, I felt we needed to have another time, we would come back and just, I wanted just another three days, just with pastors. And they said, "They will do it." So we came back. During that time, the Lord spoke something that I was afraid to share. Because he wanted me to spend three weeks with the pastors, day and night. And I told Pastor Lily, I said, "You are free to say no, but I just want to tell you what the Lord is putting on my heart." I told her and she said, "I'll go and talk to them." She came back in the evening and said, "They will do it." Amen. So in July, the following year, we came. I spent a whole month just traveling all around Taiwan, talking to pastors in different cities and just explaining to them what we need to do. And after that, we went to a city called Changhua and we were there for three weeks. They would come on Monday and leave on Friday night, go back to their churches, come back on Monday, leave on Friday night. Three weeks, we were together and we're just strategizing, how do we go about building a net of prayer altars across the nation? How do you bring it home to your church? How do you bring it to the families in your church? How do you bring it to the workplace of your church members? And they started doing it. Beloved, all the glory and honor goes to God. But God is faithful. Amen. Very soon, the young people in the churches began to get on fire for the, for the Lord. They dedicated themselves to reading the scriptures, because that is part of the requirement, really get, get people back into the word of God, to consuming and saturating the word of God on a daily basis. You know, in China, in Taiwan, I don't know about Singapore, but there is a very, very, very high pressure on students to pass. And so they go to school, at the end of the school, they come back home and then they go for coaching, extra classes. These young people are not going to coaching anymore. They would come home and then go to church to sit together in group and read the scriptures and then pray. And they would pray for two, three hours. Parents began to force their young people to stay home. Some parents even attacked the pastors and say, "You are responsible if my son fails the exams. I don't want my son in the church." Young people began to wake up long before dawn in the morning and go to church. And they would spend hours in prayer before going to school. And there was this battle between parent and pastor until the exams came. Then, all the young people who were given to prayer scored highest in their Then, all the young people who were given to prayer scored highest in their exams. Amen. And when that happened, now parents were coming to the pastors, please help get my son into prayer. So, and then there is another testimony, a wonderful testimony, of a widow whose son was in college but was not doing good, and she was so worried. And when she heard about prayer altars, she began a prayer altar with her son. So they would get together every day, read scriptures together, and then dedicate themselves to minister to the Lord. You know, the central element about a prayer altar is not so much about asking God to give you. It's about ministering to God, blessing the Lord, ministering to God, pouring your love unto the Lord, and surrendering everything to the Lord. And the boy began to do good at school. She began to do well, and things were getting better. He was even coming on top of his class. Then something happened. A neighbor, who is a very wealthy woman, Buddhist with a lot of businesses, came to their house and said, in the conversation, she said, I have problems. My husband has left me for another woman, and I'm just so devastated. And so this Christian woman says, we can pray for you. We will take it in prayer, and we'll pray that God will intervene. About a week or so later, this woman comes back and says, you can't imagine. My husband came back, and he has repented, and he has asked for forgiveness. He has given up the other woman. So they rejoiced in the Lord and forgot about it. And then a few weeks later, the woman comes back and says, can you pray for me again? This time, I have problems with my business. There are some people who want to defraud me, take money out of my business. And it's wrong, but I don't know how to fight them. If I go to court, I'm going to lose this case. So they took it in prayer. And a few weeks later, she came back and said, thank you for your prayers. Everything is now settled. I have won the case. After another period, she comes back and says, can you pray for me? And the Christians says, no. You can do this yourself. Go and buy a Bible. Every day, sit down and read at least ten chapters. Then meditate and say, what do I discover about God in what I've read? And whatever you discover, bring it back to Him in worship. Then you can ask Him anything. And the woman went and did it. She bought a Bible. And after some time, there was a knock on the door. And she came in, and she had a big envelope. And she said, I've brought my tithe. I read in the Bible that when you earn any money, you take off one tenth and give it to God. So I've brought my tithe. And this Christian says, no, you don't bring your tithe to me. If it's a tithe, let us take it to church on Sunday. Come with me on Sunday. So they went together, and on that Sunday, the Buddhist woman gave her life to the Lord Jesus. Another gentleman was working in an electronic company. And he was, he was not the head of the department. He was somewhere like second level. And they used to do, the way they used to get deals done, they would sign some checks and give some money under the table. So one day, he hears all this teaching about prayer altars. He starts a prayer altar in his home with his family. The presence of God begins to come down in their family. And he begins to feel like a new man. He's now committed. So he decides, why don't I start a prayer altar in my office? They talked about prayer altars in the marketplace. So he gets three other men and agree, let us start a prayer altar. So they start. But the prayer altar at work doesn't draw the presence of God. At home, the presence comes down. In the office, it doesn't come down. So he began to ask God, why? Why don't you bless our time in the office? And the Lord said to him, because you practice dishonesty in the office. I'm not part of that. Unless you repent and turn away from your wicked ways, I cannot come into your altar in the office. So he determined, he brought this before the others. They talked about it, and they chose, we are going to repent. We are going to turn away from all the wicked ways. And they did. Then the boss calls him and says, okay, these are checks you're going to sign, just the way they normally do them. And this brother says, I'm sorry, I can't do that. Says, why? Because my God does not allow me to do that anymore. He says, who is your God? Anyway, he says, okay, if you can't do it, give it to your subordinate. Give it to the next manager to sign. He said, I'm sorry, I can't do that. Says, what's wrong with you? We've always done this. He says, no, I'm sorry, I can't do it anymore. And the other guy said, are you sure you still need this job? The brother went away, expecting to be sacked. A few, I think, weeks later, the boss was sacked. And he became the head of the department. Amen. And he continued holding his altar of prayer, and then more people began to join. I mean, you know, in Taiwan, at that time, especially in 2008, the economic meltdown, many, many companies were working overtime. You'd finish your normal working time, and then you would have to work overtime. And he felt the Lord said to him, you don't need to work overtime. Teach the people to go home and have quality time with their families. So he called all his department and said, no overtime in my department. We finish on time, we close, everybody go home, spend time with your families. And many men came and said, we don't know how to spend time with a family. What are we going to use that time for? And said, go buy a Bible, sit down with your family, and read the Bible, and afterwards pray. And said, we don't know how to do that. Most of them are Buddhists. They said, come to the altar and learn from our altar. So they started coming in out of duty. But with time, it began to get life. And they began to do it in their homes. And then, one after the other, each family began to come to the Lord Jesus Christ. They got saved, and the altar was growing bigger. Then they were changing watches. Some would come in early and leave to go to work, others would come in later. And then, his department was doing the best in the whole establishment. Every other department was going down. His department was going up. And they asked him, what is the secret? And I said, Jesus is the answer. And they thought he was just making fun. So at the annual general meeting, they put him down as one of the speakers. He's going to speak, and he's supposed to share his secrets so that other managers could also do the same. And at first, he was very jittery, but the Lord strengthened him. So when he got there, he had a PowerPoint, and it starts with, Jesus is the answer. And he starts to show the altar, the Word of God, purity, walking in honesty. And he finished with there, Jesus is the answer. And he sat down. They had a big speaker from America who was supposed to speak. When this guy stopped, there was silence. And when the speaker came on, he couldn't speak, was like completely confused. And he was saying this stuff, this guy was talking about cannot work, that is pastation. And he spoke for about fifteen minutes and sat down. Nothing was registered. At the end of it all, the other managers were coming and saying, we want to start what you are doing. So the altar began to spread to all the other departments. And the last time we were there, I mean, almost every department now had a prayer altar. And people were coming to the Lord. Nonbelievers were giving their lives to the Lord. Praise the Lord. Another testimony. A young man, when I first saw him, he was like, the way he was dressed, you wouldn't think there's God inside of him. But he had Jesus. He received the message of the prayer altar and how to give himself to the Lord. He came back home, sat down with his wife. They talked about it. They made a commitment, we are going to seek the Lord. And they decided, we will pray together every day, even if you are away traveling. We will pray by Skype. So they started doing that. At one time, he went to Kaohsiung. He was doing, he was filming. He was a filmmaker. And they were filming, and his wife is in Taipei. Then, as they were doing, I think they had about four days to do the entire thing. Then in the middle of the filming, the clouds gathered. It was going to rain, and they were on top of a building. And he knew, if it rains, we lose time, we'll not beat the deadline. This contract is gone. And he was so desperate, he went away, sat alone, got out his Bible, got his phone, called his wife. Said, we need to raise an altar right now. We need to call upon God to save us from this situation. And so he began to worship on the phone with his wife. They worshipped together, they prayed together, they read scriptures together. And by the time he finished, the clouds had moved away, and it had not rained. And when he came back, the staff said, what were you doing? You were so full of life. What were you doing on phone? Says, I was raising an altar to the Lord. And amazingly, they didn't ask, what is an altar? What does it mean? They understood. Nonbelievers, but they understood what an altar is, what it means to invoke your God. And they said, wow, your God is so powerful and so prompt. You call upon Him, and immediately the rain goes. The next time, they were doing another filming, the rains came, and they said, hey, boss, go and do your altar. And he went away, did his altar. Again, the rain passed on. Then they started asking, can you teach us how to do that? Anyway, he led most of them to the Lord Jesus Christ. They gave their lives to the Lord. There's another woman. She had got married, but the in-laws had never accepted her. So every year during Chinese New Year, the husband would go with the children to the parents' home, celebrate Chinese New Year, but they did not allow her to come. And that had gone on for, I think it was six or eight years, and they had never received her. She got the teaching on seeking God, and she started the prayer altar in her home. When the New Year came, she packed everything, sent her husband with the children, and she stayed home. And most of the time, she was just seeking God, praying, and in the Word of God. When the children came back, they came with a cake, and they said their grandmother had sent the cake to her. I said, what? She sent a cake to me? First time in all these years. And she received it. And then a few months later, the grandma came to visit, first time. And when she came to visit, every day she was noticing at a particular time, the wife would go away, sit alone in a corner, read the Bible, then worship and pray. And she said, what is that you are doing? You do it every day. I see you do, what is it you are doing? So she explained, you're saying, it's my God, and I have to call upon Him every day, and I raise an altar. I said, is your God so, I mean, does he demand so much time? I said, oh, yes. It's the best time of the day I spend with him. Said, okay, since you believe in him that much, can you also talk to him about my issues? And she shared some prayer issues. The wife brought the issues in prayer, and God immediately answered. And the old woman was now more interested. She said, tell me more about this God of yours. Anyway, long story short, she came to the Lord Jesus Christ. The family came together. Now the wife is the beloved. Amen. She's beloved in the home, amen. Now, I'm sure Pastor Lily, when she comes, she can share with you more and more and more of these testimonies. Beloved, my heart was ministered to. My disillusionment, my discouragement was dealt with. Because in three years' time, the pastors were already testifying, we are seeing a change in the spiritual realm. There's a change in the atmosphere in our churches. There's a change in the fervency. One pastor even said, we did everything to make the youth be passionate about God. We brought in these music stars. We brought in people from America, from Australia. But we've never seen the youth on fire like they are right now. And who would have guessed that the Bible, just reading the Bible and praying, could fire up the youth like this? Amen. And then, I think it was 2000, I don't remember exactly the year, but there's a time we went in, and we did five cities. We did open-air prayer meetings for several days, three days, four days, in different, in Thailand, in Kaohsiung, five cities. And the last one was in Taipei. They closed the road that goes to the palace of the president. They closed it, eight lanes. And we put stools in the road. People sat in the middle of the road, about 20,000 people. For two days, we held prayer meetings. And on the second day, we were talking about the covenant that God made with Noah, that when I am about to bring judgment, the rainbow will appear before me, and I will remember my covenant, and I will turn away from my wrath. And as we were sharing that, suddenly, the atmosphere changed, and a huge rainbow came in the skies over the gathering. And it was so strong, so vivid. People took out their cameras and began to photograph it. And then people were crying, because the Word of God suddenly came alive. And people were crying, and the presence was so heavy. And then after about 10 minutes, it changed, and the whole sky glowed like gold, the golden color. And the clouds formed a shape of an eagle, a golden eagle, over the meeting. And again, people were photographing it. Then it moved from over the meeting and moved backwards over the palace of the king. It was, I mean, all this was caught on video. By the time we went to Hong Kong on our way back home, the newspapers in Hong Kong were writing about this. It said, God has come down in Taiwan. Praise the Lord. I know that the process is still going on in Taiwan. It's not, it's not the end. The Lord spoke to us about His destiny for Taiwan and how it is tied with five other countries, Japan, Korea, China, Hong Kong, and how it is tied together. And that Taiwan will be used by God as a tugboat. You know, when you're in a harbor, and the big ship is in the harbor, it doesn't start its engines from within the harbor. It needs a tugboat to pull it out into the open sea. Then it can put on its engines. And the Lord said, Taiwan is a tugboat. It's going to pull this ship called China out into the open seas. And God will use China in these last days to be a big blessing and a big influence in the nations of the world. And if you interact with the people from Taiwan, Pastor Lily and the others, they will tell you what is happening today. Nations all around are beginning to call upon them. Please come and help us. Come and share with us what you have. Come and teach us how to do this, seek after the Lord. Even Korea, Korea, which was the powerhouse of revival for many, many decades. Today, it's turning to Taiwan and beginning to say, please come and help us. Please come and help us. They are already starting, I think there's now 11 cities in Korea that have started to build prayer altars all over. I want to emphasize, prayer altars is not the magic. It's the lordship of Jesus Christ and the people who are willing to align with Him for the purposes He has for the nations. When we were praying, the Lord began to put upon our hearts a big burden for the entire region of Asia-Pacific. And we felt very strongly, as much as God was moving in Taiwan, we needed to pray and open up other key centers that could be hubs that would serve the nations in Asia-Pacific. And the first three countries that came to our mind were Hong Kong, Singapore, and Malaysia. If there was time, I could go into details for each of them, the spiritual wealth that each of them has and the uniqueness of each of them. So I just want to end here and say, beloved, it's my cry. So I just want to end here and say, beloved, it's my cry that the leaders of God's church in Singapore will have that witness inside their hearts to come together, join hands together and labor for the destiny of God for Singapore. This is a nation that, I mean, there's no denial at all that this is a very unique nation. Small, you could say, there was no way it could survive alone. But God has made it survive and prevail in all circumstances. Singapore's destiny is big and it is great among the nations. The links and the connections that God has created between Singapore and the nations is not just to serve the material gain. It has eternal spiritual implications. And my appeal to you is, can we rise and join hands together and fight for this, to see his kingdom come and his will done in this land as it is in heaven? And to see, I mean, Singapore become a blessing among the nations for the kingdom of God. Amen. I just want to ask, because we could go on and on and on, but let us just take a few minutes and just pray. I want you to pray that God will move upon the hearts of his servants in Singapore to rise up to the right place where he's calling us. You look at Taiwan, we could very easily have missed what God was doing. Looking at how busy we are, we also have plans, we also have visions, we also have this. It was so easy to miss. So it is the same here. This is a very, very busy society. We could easily be taken up by considerations like that and think, oh, we cannot do it. My prayer is, if the leaders today would join hands together and we maybe put together a national awakening and transformation summit where we could draw God's people together on a large scale and share the vision of what God is casting. And as we seek the Lord prayerfully and God will prophetically reveal what he's speaking to the land of Singapore at such a time as this, what is calling us to. God is not, I mean, he's not uniform. What he did in Taiwan, he did. Maybe in Singapore, he may do something slightly different. But he will always honor his word and he will fulfill his promises. Amen. So I just ask, can we rise up unto our feet? We are going to take a few minutes and then afterwards, maybe we can have some feedback. If any questions or comments, we shall have them. But I'm going to ask, the Bible says, when two people shall agree to ask anything of the Father, it shall be granted. Can we just go two by two and we hold hands before the Lord and agree and begin to lift up this before the Lord? Amen? Just join hands with somebody else? Thank you, Lord Jesus. Thank you, Father. Amen. Let's lift our voices to the Lord. Lift your voice unto the Lord. Begin to call upon his holy name. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. We give you praise, we give you glory, we give you honor. Lord, we magnify your holy name. We magnify you above all other names. We thank you that you have called these men and women into your service, oh Lord. We thank you that you have built up Singapore until today, oh Lord. We thank you for the foundations that you have put in Singapore, the spiritual foundations, the family foundations, the economic foundations, the foundations in government and the foundations in the social values. So today we pray, Father, arise, arise, oh God. Arise and let the enemies despise. Let the powers of darkness in this land be brought under the authority of your name in the name of Jesus, in the power of the Holy Spirit. Great, as we work towards that awakening summit. And the awakening summit, it should be that now we rally a momentum to begin pushing the nation in the direction God is calling us to. But there are so many resources, books, videos, audios, and also on the net. There are lots of YouTube recordings that could be helpful. Could be helpful. But I would say, one thing I know about God is when he brings the word in season, there is always witness in our hearts. We can witness it and say, I know that is God. And when we do that, then it's important for us to respond to that and let the Lord lead us step by step. So if we can continue funding this fire and passion that we feel in our hearts and feed it with the right resources, the Lord will continue preparing us for such a time as when we come together.
Pastor John, there's already currently existing altars, prayer altars in Singapore, I believe. So what happens to those altars?
We build along with them. Amen. Anything that is of God will rise up with whatever God is doing. Amen? That's why we emphasized, there's a need for us to take our eyes off just the ministries we are building and see the bigger work of the kingdom of God in the land. Then the Bible says, in the last days, everybody will stand in his rightful position. There will be no jostling of one another and we shall be able to move as one army.
Thank you, Pastor John. Pastor John, you were saying that you're part of Uganda is like the midwife. I think in this nation, we are in the process of birthing. You spent time in Taiwan with the pastors. Would you come and spend time with our pastors? Thank you.
Amen, amen. Yes, we would be willing to come and spend time here. In Taiwan, I spent time there several weeks. We also sent in a team of prayer missionaries who spent months. They are traveling across the land, spending time with different pastors and leaders and intercessors. So it's a combined effort. But as long as it's fulfilling what God wants to do, we are in.
Any more question?
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. We thank God for bringing us together. And I personally, when I see pastors meeting together, I feel the joy of the Lord in my heart. Because this is what we are always experiencing in different nations, pastors not coming together. So I thank God for all of you for giving time to be here. And mine is not a question, it's just kind of encouragement that let's not wait again for another gathering of Dr. John Molinde or any other minister of God. But my prayer is that we start from here. As Pastor was telling us, the one who was from Billy Graham, he was explaining to us that this is like an affirmation from God. So it's now you as the pastors in Singapore to say that, where do we go from now? From here, where do we go? Where do we start from? You don't need to wait for any other speaker. You have at least to be meeting, you know how busy you are. If you can meet like once in two weeks or once a month and gather the way you are and ask the Lord what he's speaking to. Different people, different pastors, what is the Lord saying? And pray together. And by the time these speakers come from anywhere they come from, at least they come and find a team that has been working together. So I'm thanking God so much for this time that it is the beginning. It is the new beginning and we don't undermine new beginnings. Let's rise up. This is the right time. Hallelujah. God bless you.